To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Trustee Guyer.
Here.
Trustee Spurling. Trustee Lee.
Here.
Trustee Bettinger.
Here.
Trustee Youngerman.
Here.
And Trustee Marisak.
All right, next item, first item, public participation. Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the board? I see one. If you want to come down, can you just state your name and address for the record? Welcome.
I did sign in, but my name is Judy Bush. I live at 55 Sonora Drive in Boulder Hill. I'm here tonight because the last few times I've come in to pay my water bill, I've questioned whoever's taken my bill, why you want to charge me a convenience fee if I use my credit card or a bank statement electronically pay you. And I was told that you folks get charged a convenience fee and that you're going to pass along that fee to your customer. And I said, well, who made, who makes that decision? And finally, this last time I paid the bill, I was told the board did. So that's why I'm here tonight. I will tell you, I've been, I was a finance director for over 20 years in a not-for-profit world, and never once did we charge our customers, our donors, our contributors, a convenience fee. That is a cost of doing business. I only pay two bills, not on the internet, over the phone. Every single one of them allows me to pay with my debit card or my bank account without a convenience fee. So I just would ask that the village reconsider this. You know, it would give you your money instantaneously. You're not going to have to walk my check to the bank or remote deposit it, however you, you know, you handle this in particular. And I think it would be a service. And in today's world, again, I don't pay anybody a convenience fee. Nobody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, Justin?
Is there a convenience fee for the direct debit program?
There is not a convenience fee for the direct debit program. That would be where the banking information, we take the banking information and it is taken out automatically. Our bank does it on our behalf. And we schedule that every other month when the bills due.
Like on the due date, yeah. That's how I'd my setup. But there's no fee on that.
There is no fee on the direct debit program, no.
But there is a fee if you want to punch in your credit card online.
If, online, there's e-check, credit card, debit card. If you come in to the counter to pay, there's a $2 fee on that. And then actually, if you do, we, most municipalities don't even have where you can call in over the phone, but you can also do that, and there's a $2 fee on that as well.
And we charge $2 if you walk in here and hand us your check?
Yes. Well, if you, if you hand us a check or cash, no.
Because if you pay with a credit card?
If you pay with a credit card.
And that's not our fee, right? That's a, that's the fee that we're being charged to, to do that.
So the direct debit would be the way to go if you want your payment automatically taken out with no fee? That would be the option?
What do the other municipalities do? What's Oswego and North Aurora, Sugar Grove, what do they do?
If you can hold on just a second, I have to look up the email.
While you're looking, have any idea how many of these types of transactions we do every month? Basically, what's the fee that we would be swallowing if we didn't pass that along?
I do not know off the top of my head, but Justin may know.
Sorry.
Just looking for that. Jeff, do you recall when the village first started accepting credit cards, there was no fee, is that correct, years ago?
I mean, we've always been charged a fee.
But I mean, we did not pass that on.
I don't remember if we didn't pass it along right to begin with or not, but we've always been, we've always been charged a fee.
Yeah, I recall it. When we first started the program with credit cards, there was no fee because I used to pay mine with a credit card. And then when the fee kicked in, then I quit paying with the credit card. I went to the check. So I, I know at one point in time, we did not pass that along. And I don't know if you have data from previous of, or why we started charging the fee? Was it that the, the cost was so high?
It would probably be the amount of people that were using credit cards and probably got too much for us to, to want to swallow.
What do you got, Justin?
So, for those coming into the Village Hall to pay, this information is for the first six months of this year. The fees are roughly $1,500. That is just for coming in to pay. For the first six months of the year, this is from PSN, who does our online payments and phone payments. That amount is roughly $10,000 for six months. So, if we, if we wouldn't be charging that, we'd be looking at, for a year, over $20,000 hit.
And does anybody do this without a fee? That was what Danny was asking. Any of our neighbors just swallow the fee?
So, we talked to Oswego. They have no fees, but they also have no phone payments effective 11/15 of 19. Yorkville, they only accept phone payments if you're being shut off. Aurora does no fees. However, their, their phone system links to a payment center, which, with their size, I'm not surprised they can do something like that. Sugar Grove has no fees, but they, they have no phone payments either. We can look into others, but that's what I was able to obtain this, this afternoon.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, I mean, it's a cost. We have options that don't incur a fee. And it's a convenience fee. That's exactly what it is. It's convenient. I mean, I know when, when we accept credit card payments at my job, that cost is factored into the cost of the job.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say that would be, so, a couple of years ago, I got tired of doing the same thing every month, so I set mine up to auto withdraw on the due date. Haven't had a, haven't paid attention since, really, but.
My wife just tells me to drop it off on the way to a meeting.
Mine does too, but she never gives it to me the night of the meeting. It's always the next morning. So I get to come back.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Judy. Appreciate it. Okay, if there's nothing else on that, we'll go ahead and we'll move on to the consent agenda. I'll read the items. Entertain a motion for approval. Minutes of the Village Board Meeting, October 28th, executive session minutes of October 28th, the building report for October of 2019, water production report for October 2019, accounts payable through November 7th of 2019, and the cancellation of the 20, sorry, November 19th committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Trustee Youngerman.
Yes.
Trustee Marisak.
Yes.
Trustee Guyer.
Yes.
Trustee Lee.
Yes.
And Trustee Bettinger.
Yes.
Not curious. If I have nothing. All right, moving on, items for separate action. The first two items we'll discuss together, and they're both second reading, but of course we don't have to take action if we have questions. So ordinance 1867 is proposing a text amendment regarding cannabis-related businesses and regulations. Ordinance 1868 amending the village code to implement the cannabis retailers occupation tax. That is first reading and passage on the second if we wish. With that, I'll ask the next person that looks at me, Rich, for summary.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, you have in your packet a modified ordinance for cannabis-related businesses. We've discussed this now twice. The modification that's been made included what was requested by the Village Board in terms of no onsite consumption, with the exception of infused adult beverages in conjunction with a restaurant-type operation. Frankly, it's something that had not been considered previously, but we've been approached by a business that wants to remain anonymous at this point in time about the possibility of a use in the community that would include a cultivation center, a restaurant, and then a brewery that would have infused adult beverages with cannabis-related products. So that modification was included as a amendment to the text that you previously saw. So, be happy to answer any questions related to that. We can't identify the business at this point in time, but it is a request that was looked at as a possible cannabis-related use.
Okay. And the, I guess the one comment that I would have is, and this came up while I was talking with Trustee Guyer today, is that just for optics sake, since we did amend the ordinance tonight since our first reading, I would propose that we discuss it, talk about it, ask questions, and not take final action on it tonight, and then take final action at a future meeting in two weeks. Just to give the public a chance to comment if they have any issues. Obviously, nobody's here tonight with any issues, but just for optics sake, there's no real time crunch as to why we would pass it tonight. But again, you can overrule me if you like. But let's have a good discussion, ask questions. We can get anything answered by next, by the next meeting.
I agree.
Yeah, and Trustee Spurling is not here either.
Right.
So she may have some.
And I should also say that I do support the change, and I think it, I think it'll be a good use, a, a good program in town. The one thing that I would, and I've mentioned to all of you on, on individual phone calls, is this would be a special, if, if this type of use were to come in, it would be a special use. It would require a liquor license from us, and it would require some, some form of a cannabis license. So, we'll be able to fully vet a particular user in the future.
And that would still be the case in all cannabis-related businesses. Every one of them would have to have cannabis license from the state, as well as go through the special use procedure with the village. So none of that has changed. It was just the addition of this type of use that frankly hadn't been considered as a, as a possible use in the past.
And this is related to a restaurant. It's not a, it's not a vape shop. It's not a cigar store that has a little room in the back.
And we've included that specifically. No other onsite consumption, which is what we talked about before, has been included. This is the only type of onsite consumption that was anticipated.
But it was have to, is it directly tied to a, a restaurant?
Yes.
License? They'd have to get a restaurant liquor license kind of thing?
Yes.
I think it sounds real good if they put the cannabis in one of our buildings somewhere. They're not selling it outright, I mean, to anybody. They don't have a retail license for it. You got a brewery, which North Aurora's got, Oswego's got, restaurant combined, those look all good. The last part, I'm not real sure of. I, I, I never heard of cannabis in your beer. And I would think it's a recipe for drunks that are on the road, and now there are high drunks on the road. And to our police department, I don't know how they would correct that situation. And I don't want Montgomery known as the only town I've ever heard of that has beer or marijuana in your, in your beer. That, to me, doesn't, the rest of the stuff, hey, that's fine. Come on ahead. I mean, it looks, sounds good to me. But to have a, have it in your beer, I, I think you're just, I don't know, maybe it's a novelty for an idea, but to me, I don't.
You know, somebody probably said the same thing about alcohol in your beer?
Yeah.
A hundred and some years ago?
Yeah, that was a hundred years ago. I'll be dead by five years, so it don't make a difference to me then. If they want to bring it on, bring it on. But right now, I can't see a Mondo stopping a guy that's high, and also, he's been drinking, and, and he uses that as an excuse. Oh, you guys sold it to me.
Well, and that would, honestly, and that's the responsibility of the user, of the, well, first of all, the person that is consuming, but also the restaurant that you're at, just like now. If you're over-served, there's liability there.
I mean, they can't come back and say, oh, sorry, this bar served me, and they're in your town. You can't write me a ticket for it because you sold it to me. That, the logic isn't there.
I can see having the growing process. I mean, the guy, if, if I was in a business, that would be what I'd want. Not how much marijuana I'm putting in a guy's beer. That to me is a, I don't know.
I think this is like a cafe-type thing. I don't think this is, I picture it more like a microbrewery-type, a little bit higher-end type of a business, where, you know, you're going to go in there and sit and have a, have a beer and.
Eat your food.
And eat your food and enjoy an evening out and go on your way.
Why would he have to have the marijuana in his beer? I'd go over there then. Once I have marijuana in the beer, I'm not going to go over a place like that.
I go to Poor Boys and I drink tonic water. I mean, you have a beer or a scotch. Why do you do that? Because it's what you do. Just, I mean, I'm not a marijuana smoker. I'm not a cannabis user, but.
How many pubs you have in town where I can have a scotch and water, or you can have a tonic? How many, how many of these are going to be around? I haven't heard of any. And I don't want to be the first.
Because it's now, it's now legal. It's going to be legal.
Yeah, there's currently zero.
It's going to be, it's currently zero, but it's going to become, maybe it's going to be multiple.
It's a guy eating Cheetos, a drunk guy eating Cheetos, so you know where he's been. So.
You're afraid of Cheetos and marijuana.
I just don't want to police somebody's personal behavior. It's, I don't think that it's my role to try to police whether or not somebody can do something. I don't want to stop people from drinking big gulps full of coke and sugar. It's not my place.
Well, and the, the conversation that we've had, although we didn't specifically state, is that the board was not interested in, like, smoke shops. We didn't want a, a facility where people would sit around and, and smoke. We just didn't think that that was the, that really fit our vision for the community. But cannabis, cannabis-infused beverage optically looks exactly identical to somebody that's at Poor Boys, you know, having a beer or tonic water.
If it was a regular microbrewery, we wouldn't be having this conversation. I mean, those are the types of businesses and stuff. And residents have been saying, hey, I want these sorts of things.
In a restaurant?
And I'm sure that all their beer is not going to be marijuana or cannabis-infused beer. They're probably going to have different.
I would think so.
Type of beers and stuff, and wines and that sort of thing. You know, you've got this one item that has some optics to it that might be, I'm not even going to use the term controversial, because I don't even think it's controversial anymore. And if that's not your thing, don't try it. You know, I've, each of the last two conversations we've had about this, I've grilled the, the police department about field sobriety and what we're doing and how we're doing it. And it looks like, it sounds as though the police are figuring that out, and, and we've come a long way since our first conversation. I don't want to potentially lose a business in something that the residents have been saying that they want. If it's a restaurant, the residents have been saying that they want it, just because of one small item that we don't necessarily know, you know, a, a whole lot about. It's not going to be a majority of their sales by far.
Right, because they would prob, the problem might not succeed then.
Right.
Because you, you don't know what your market is. There's going to be, I would think. But again, that's something that we can fully vet an applicant. Right now, we're, we're speaking hypothetically if this were to come into our community. Point well taken, Danny. I mean, I, I agree.
Well, if he wants it that bad, and he just wants to eliminate, like you say, he may only have one beer, he may have all his beers with marijuana. So, if he wants the growing part and the brewery, then putting it in one beer is not, would not, as a businessman, I wouldn't think would be a big deal unless it's a novelty to draw people.
But again, we don't pick the winners and losers in the free-market economy. So if that's a, a business he wants to, someone wants to set up and try in the community, why roadblock it? We have the ability during the special use process to, like Matt said, vet any, anything that really would jump out as a problem, we handle them.
So does anybody know when the state made this legal, as far as edibles being infused or beverages being infused? From my limited research, you can either infuse THC or CBD. Obviously, the CBD isn't going to give you the same effects as a THC. But is there a maximum amount allowed to be infused? Or can they just infuse as much as they want? So, for instance, like alcohol, you know, 30, 40% by volume is your standard, you know, alcohol. And in practical terms, you can't have more than 95% by volume alcohol because it's just not chemically possible. So you know, even the most potent alcohol is only 95%. But is there a limit on marijuana by the state statute that you can only infuse so many milligrams? Or is the sky the limit? And, and the reason I ask that, and again, my, my limited research on it, is that the, the THC works a little differently than even alcohol. When you do an edible, or, or when you drink it, it takes a little bit longer for it to get into your system. It's not like when you smoke cannabis where it's almost an immediate effect. So, that time can vary, obviously, with people. And it's a more intense effect, and it lasts longer than alcohol. And the more milligrams that's infused, the more intense the effect's going to be. And I guess, and I, I understand what everybody's saying, and this is kind of something new here in the state. I know other states have done it. I don't know what their experience is. I didn't get that far into the research. But if somebody goes their first time in and says, I'm going to try one of these, and it's infused with a minimal amount, that reaction's going to be a lot different than if it's infused with a higher amount. And so that's the reason I'm asking. Is there a limit that they can be so many milligrams? Because if you get somebody that just tries it, they go, they take it, ah, no big deal. They leave, and then it kicks in, and they have no tolerance. You know, and I, I get, I get what everybody's saying. I, I get what Danny's saying, and, and Doug and Steve, Tom. I, you know, it's, it's a free market. The guy's going to try it. Either it's going to work out for him, and he's going to continue, or it's not. That's, that's going to be his risk. And I, I really don't want to, you know, tell people what they can and can't do. Obviously, the state's made it legal. But my only fear is, is someone is going to go in there to try it, and the effects are going to be felt after they leave the restaurant and they're driving home. And I know that's true with alcohol or anything else. But again, I'm not an expert. This is just a limited research I've done, that the, the effect is a lot more intense than it is in alcohol. And, and when it kicks in, it kicks in. And people, you know, they, they see things, you know, it's, and I, I just would hate, you know, for someone to, to have that. But again, the state's made it legal.
And maybe that's something that we can look into before the next meeting to see if the state put a cap. I would be willing to bet that there is a cap, because just by example, when I go to Starbucks, they can't sell me the Nitro cold brew coffee, the large, because it has too much caffeine in it. So I would, and I don't know if that's a state law. So I would be willing to bet that there's probably some maximum. And maybe we can look to see if that's something we can put in our ordinance too.
Right, as a non-home rule.
Yeah. And from a business decision, if I was a business owner, I probably wouldn't want things to be maxed out. I wouldn't want to sell my clients or my, you know, consumers a drink that is going to send them home in five minutes. I'd want them to be able to hang out.
Yeah, I'm not sure of the answer offhand, and that's, you know, as President Brawley had said, that's something that we can look into. I would imagine, though, because there is, you know, the decriminalization has a threshold for what's legal and what's not legal. You know, similarly to how you can drive with, under a certain amount of alcohol, I imagine that there still has to be some threshold for serving somebody, you know, because you can't personally consume more than the criminal statute would allow you to have. So in some, I, I can look and see how that works together, but there's still that at play as well, you know, in addition to what a business can sell, as to what someone can consume.
Could you look into how the money works? Because if, if he sells that beer and it's got marijuana in it, then you can't put that in a bank, right? Correct? I mean, not in Colorado, you can't. They have their own little warehouses full of money because they can't put it in a bank.
I guess, good question, but would it change your vote?
No, but I'd like to know how, how we're going to break it down to.
I mean, they're required to pay the tax on it, and it's their burden to prove. I'm just, I'm just thinking. I don't know the answer to that. I don't know if we can find the answer, but if we had an applicant in front of us, they could probably explain it, as to what the banking situation is.
And that gets into my other question, too. So if it's infused, so when he sells that beverage infused, is the additional 3% tax placed on that because it's infused with cannabis? Because it is, because that's, and the ordinance that's before us tonight, it doesn't really specifically say that. It says sell of cannabis. It doesn't say and infused products. So.
We can definitely add a clarifier, but it should encompass that regardless.
And is this?
Not that I'm advocating edibles, but just, just to make the ordinance clean.
Right.
Yeah, and to cover the beverages.
Well, because edibles would be covered under this tax.
Right, right. Yeah, but I've, yeah, edibles are a different thing in my mind, because somebody's just consuming those. You, you know, drinking, the, the drinking, the beverage part is, so like, you know, you go to a burger. You get a burger, you get a beer. I mean, that's to enhance your meal. It's, it's just something, you're, you're not there, well, I don't go there, to sit there and, and just drink and drink and drink. Get a beer and a burger, and I'm done. An edible, you know, what are you eating it for? You're eating it for the effect.
I, I have a question. If Bennie's decided to sell a marijuana or cannabis-infused beer, would they have to go through the processes? Is it a special use?
Yes.
Because it's cannabis?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's something else I actually saw today, is that, that beer companies are starting to, to manufacture this. Major beer companies.
Did hear, like, yeah, like Budweiser or something.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? We got a couple of things that we'll report back with hopefully next time. Steve?
Do the setbacks change?
We changed the setbacks for restaurants serving infused beverages only if they were separated from residential areas by a major state roadway.
Okay. Major, but in that instance, the major roadway serves as, as an excessive buffer, really. It's not, it can't really be attached to a residential area then.
That was the intent, yes.
Yeah, I like that. Okay, any other questions? So we'll add both of these on for discussion because Teresa's not here at the next meeting, but they will be on for approval in two weeks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so that's A and B. Move on to item C, the announcement of the 2019 tax levy.
Thank you, President Brawley. State statute requires the village announce its estimated proposed property tax levy at least 20 days prior to the passage of the ordinance itself. We are planning December 9th, the December 9th meeting as the date for approval. We have to have that filed with the county by December 24th. Staff is recommending a levy of $2,288,753. This is approximately $55,000 or 2.5% above the 2018 extension. And that includes the property tax cap of 1.9%. I've attached a number of graphs, history of tax rate, EAV extension, and then also how we calculate that number. And then lastly, how each type of property would be affected, the amount that each type of property would be affected by. If there are any questions, I can answer those at this time.
I'm going to ask my yearly question, just, so, the proposed tax levy includes the allowable EAV increase. So, the proposed tax levy includes the allowable EAV increase on existing homes that aren't fully assessed or new build. Okay, I would like that taken out, like I do every year. I will, we can assess tax on new build homes and homes that are not fully assessed, but I don't want to increase the EAV for any existing homes. I don't want, we haven't done that. I don't want to continue, I don't want to start doing that.
I think when you made that comment last year, I said the same thing I'll say now is that it's...
Oh, it's Justin's job to, and I appreciate the fact that he's done that.
I should say that too. It's his job to do that. The other thing though is, at some point, we'll have to come off of zero, right? We squeeze, squeeze, squeeze with salaries and the cost of running the village. At some point, we'll have to come off zero, as long as we all understand that. I don't think, you can't do that for twenty years artificially lower that because you will squeeze. I mean, it has an impact on your budget. I think we all understand that. At the same time, I don't hear anybody objecting to what you said.
Is that the consensus then?
Just pull out the 1.5%.
Well, if we left it in, we could absorb the fees for the people that want the convenience of paying with their credit card.
Oh, so they can pay it without knowing about it.
Or maybe if the state didn't tax us out a house and home, we'd actually have a little bit more money to spend in other places.
I'm good with taking it out.
So the recommendation is capture all new growth?
Only.
And then forego any additional increase on existing?
You know, the hardest part is that, and I think we should do that, is that I even pulled up my tax bill for the last seven years. And just the way municipalities tax, we ask for an amount, not so much a rate, and it kind of backs into the rate. My tax bill bounces around every year. So people will still come up to us and say, "You raised my taxes five dollars." I'm like, well, technically, we asked for the same amount of money. Just having to explain that every year is...
Yeah, I'm paying more...
Compared to the value of everybody else's.
Right, if your, yeah, if your property value goes up a little bit relative to your neighbors, then your tax bill went up.
Yeah, my taxes are higher going to the village now than they were ten years ago. The value of my home's gone up.
And how many years in a row have we frozen the levy, Justin?
Six or seven.
Seven years, yeah.
And if we were to go that route, is there, from the staff side, deferred maintenance we're putting off? Are there projects that won't be done? Does not making that minor increase?
I don't think there's anything specific we can call out and say, "This is not going to happen if we..."
Okay, I just didn't know if that was a...
No, I don't think it's tied to any...
A kick the can down the road thing again.
And what is that dollar amount, that 1.9? If we were to pull that out, what does that really equate to?
Talking a total increase of $55,000.
Right, so it's half that probably.
Well, that's, I mean, 2.48, you're taking 1.9 out, so...
So it's two-thirds that probably.
Yeah.
So if we were to exclude the 1.9%, the increase would be roughly $12,675. So the difference between those two?
Forty-two thousand.
Right. Forty, roughly forty thousand.
Okay. All right. Any, anything else, Justin, that we need to cover?
I don't think so.
All right. Do we have to have a public hearing or anything with that in December?
December night.
Okay. That'll be fun. All right, no action on that tonight, right?
Correct. Great.
All right. Okay, moving on, item D, we have a PSA with EEI for GIS utility map conversion. Director Young, or, sorry? The guy that was looking at me smiling? Mark, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Village of Montgomery uses utility maps by both public works and community development on a daily basis to identify infrastructure locations throughout the village. The village contracts EEI to generate new maps and maintain or edit existing maps. The village currently uses AutoCAD-based maps to identify utilities. However, converting existing maps to GIS will provide the village with the ability to use GPS to locate utilities and provide staff with a more detailed information than the existing AutoCAD maps. This will provide both public works and community development with the access to these maps and information that are more accurate and can reduce staff time on a daily basis as well. The village currently uses Esri GIS in some applications, but will benefit dramatically from the conversion of the existing utility maps. So at this time, I'm recommending the approval of the PSA with EEI for the utility map conversion. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time.
Is there questions or a motion?
Is there, I have a question. Is there any additional cost related to, we need to buy a new printer to be able to print these maps? Or new software to be able to interface with it?
No, we currently have the software that we're using through the Esri GIS. That's managed on a smaller scale. We're hoping to expand that scale over time goes on. As far as the printer goes, the village does have a printer currently that handles the mapping. We do a lot of the printing in-house currently.
Make the motion.
Second.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Betzinger? Trustee Youngerman?
Yes.
And Trustee Marisak?
Yes.
5-0, thank you. Item E is award of a contract to Cornerstone Partners for landscape maintenance services. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. President. So first, I'd like to point out, there were two errors on the cover sheet that it submitted in the bid packet, or in the packet. This project did go out for bid, so under awarded, recommended to lowest bidder. It said here, "This project did not go out to bid," that's inaccurate. This project did, and then the also waiver of bids, if you look down at the bottom, 720 ILCS 5 slash 33 E dash 1. That should be yes indicated on there. So just wanted to point that out first and foremost. So, the Village of Montgomery opened bids for the 2020 Landscape Services Contract on September 25th of this year. The scope of this work is focused on the landscape maintenance of village properties, right of ways, and properties managed by the village through SSA agreements. A total of six contractors submitted a request and were sent bid packets. Bidding for this project was closed on October 8th, which at that time, Cornerstone Partners is the only contractor that completed and returned a packet to the village. Cornerstone was awarded the contract for landscape services for the village in 2017 and was extended the contract in 2018 and 19 as well. Cornerstone Partners has proven to be a contractor that performs at a high standard and has a, the experience and familiarity to continue to provide that standard for the village. In your packet, you'll also see a cost comparison sheet from previous contract years, along with cost estimates for the 2020 season. This cost comparison breaks down each location that is serviced and the scope of work that is being performed. Please do note in that comparison, there were some changes to this year's contract. They were minor, but, so if you kind of look at it from a general standpoint, a lot of the cost pretty much stayed very stagnant with the previous year costs. So, wanted to note that. So staff at this time is recommending the Award of Landscape Services Contract to Cornerstone Partners for the do not exceed amount of $178,224.75. If there are any questions, I'm happy to entertain those at this time.
I have a question.
Yes.
In the time since 2017, I know that in 2017, there was a significant increase in the amount for the landscape contract. And the contractual doc, the contractual documents had certain dates that they had to hit. Have they ever been laid on a date?
Not to my knowledge. The only date that I'm aware of in the contract is, I believe, for the mulching or cultivating. I believe that's the only date that specifies in the contract, but I would have to look at that again. But to my knowledge, they have not missed any of those contracted dates.
Is pruning part of this as far as for these area maintenance for Fairfield, Foxmore, Blackberry, Orchard Prairie North, those things? Is pruning part of this service?
So we have removed the pruning aspect from this part of this contract.
Was it in previous contracts?
Yes.
If we've removed the pruning aspect from this contract, why is this contract going up? What was the component, the pruning component of the previous contracts?
I would have to go back and look at the previous years to see what that stipulated in the contract.
Are you gonna bid out pruning separate?
Correct. The reason for the separate pruning contract, what we're trying to target is, number one, to identify the proper time of year, which we should be pruning, instead of throughout the heart of the summer, when it's not really conducive to be pruning a lot of this, a lot of the trees. That was a big part of it, and then also kind of focus in and get a better detail on pruning itself instead of trying to cover it all encompassing in one contract. So kind of give it a little bit more detail than give staff the ability to monitor that a little bit better as well.
So if I look at this correctly, in 2017, we were doing, including pruning, we were at 177,970, correct?
Correct.
And now, we've removed pruning. We don't know what the cost is of that component, but we're now at 178,224.
Correct.
I would think that it would be less than that.
I guess it's hard to say with how, how much do you expect the pruning to be? I mean, you guys know...
Pruning is pretty labor intensive, especially if you get in there with hand pruners and that sort of thing. I saw what they did and how they pruned the material on Griffin Drive, and that was fine, but it's labor intensive because of the way that you have to do it. And so, I think it's high. I want to know what the component is for the pruning. Because right now, they're looking at this and they're saying, oh, well, we've only gone up three or four hundred dollars from our contract in 2017, but they're also not doing one of the things that was in the contract to do originally.
So one thing I do want to highlight is the fact that the pruning that was conducted on Griffin Drive was part of the rejuvenative prune contract, which was totally separate from the landscape services contract as well. So, that intensive pruning was part of that contract, which was separate from this one.
Was it Cornerstone that did that, or was it...
Yes.
Okay.
What was, what's the pruning that is in this contract?
Again, we've removed it from this current contract. I would have to go back and look, get a specific look at what all was entailed. I think in, and without, again, without looking at it, I think it was pretty general pruning. I don't think that it called out very specific line items, which was again, part of our discussion and why we wanted to remove it so we could be a little bit more focused on why we were attacking the areas that we are.
I guess the question that he's kind of, the question he's kind of getting around at is, pruning came back at twenty or thirty grand, would you, would you end up rejecting this? Would you have rejected this contract for being excessively higher than their current contract?
Me?
No, just, it's a hypothetical.
I think one of the things to consider is the fact that pruning was an absorbed cost in their per-location. We didn't have specific pruning called out. If you look at the comparison, pruning was never identified in any of the 2017 line items here. So everything you see was encompassed in part of their mowing per acre and divided into the areas. So again, I would have to look back at that, at the previous contract to see what the difference was. But again, I don't, I don't believe that the costs for pruning were ever separated out in the contract. Meaning that if they proposed, let's say, Area 2 maintenance for Orchard Prairie, or I'm sorry, Montgomery Crossing, if you look, there was an increase in the pricing. Their pruning for that area would have been included in that dollar amount.
Okay, back in like 2015, we had like four people, five people that bid on all this. And I agree, these guys have done a lot better job than the ones back then. Although, we probably had the best crop of dandelions every spring, right here along the front of our, our village hall, every spring. I don't know if they forget to weed it or what, but why is, why are they the only one to bid? I don't understand that. That's just kind of...
Now, that's a question that I can't really answer. There was, like I said, we got an immediate response, response from when we put it out to bid, with bidders requesting packets, so we sent those out at that time. I can't really say to why there weren't more that completed the packet and submitted those. It is a complex contract. There's a lot of moving parts to this contract. That's something that we could definitely look at in the future to break the contract out into smaller sections and bid them separately to get more advantageous attraction to bidders to, to look at these items. That's definitely something to consider. But as far as why we didn't get more submitted bid packets back, I can't, I can't attest to that.
Was it the timing of, of the bid open? I mean, you had a two-week window to submit, submit bids. Was that, is that too short of a timeframe? If six vendors pulled packets, but only one came in, you know what I mean? Being like you said, that it's, it's got some complexities to it.
Sure.
Should we have maybe looked at a, at a longer window to potentially get some, some competition in that bidding process there?
Again, I'm not, I'm not that overly familiar with how the bid process works as far as landscape contracting goes. I do know that we targeted this time of year specifically so that the contractors could view the areas where there's not snow cover on the ground, things of that nature, so they could see it in a state which needs to be cut. We did also have a provision in the contract for them to submit questions. I got no questions from any of the bidders. So that's, that's one of the other things to kind of consider. So I can't really attest to whether the window was too, too short.
So was it, Cornerstone was the only one to submit, or the only one to submit a completed packet?
They were the only ones to submit a packet to the village. There were six contractors that picked up packets or requested packets. But of those six, Cornerstone was the only one that submitted.
Yeah, the pruning, like he was mentioning, if pruning was in there, we wouldn't be talking about it. We would have approved it probably already. But that's the only kind of curveballs, what that cost could be, and maybe we would have approved it anyway with that.
Yeah, I mean, how much of the previous, the 2017 contract was, what percentage of that was pruning? Because now that service is removed and we're paying a higher price.
Yeah, I mean, granted, it's, if we did one percent increase per year, it's still more than this.
But then I'm assuming, okay, if you look at that, on 2017, your, your first year contract's a hundred, just under $178,000. Your second year award contract is $176,000. Your third year contract is $176,000. And I'm assuming the second and third year contracts had pruning in them as well. Is that correct? We've just recently taken it out?
Correct. It was not taken out in the previous two contracts. So it would be, this would be the first contract that pruning has been removed.
And then the way that Cornerstone has this now, right now, it's 178 and change. Second year contract bumps up to 204,000?
Correct, and that increase is due to the fact that the second year, so we're alternating our mulching year. So one year we're doing cultivation, and so there's a drastic decrease in the cost in the cultivation year. So if you look on that sheet, it's marked there on the, on the right side that indicates which years are cultivation.
But was that similar to the last contract? Because there, there is no bump in their second year in the last contract. So they just included the mulch in that price.
Correct, and that was something that was changed under the last director. So I would have to go back and make sure that these numbers were 100% accurate to compare to those changes that were made. Because originally, when the contract was put out, it did not call for alternating years in the mulching. So forgive me, this, this information on the left-hand column for the 2017 might not be accurate for that reason.
It might not have mulch in it.
Yeah. It, well, actually, it may not have the, the, yes, it may not have the mulching costs in there.
If I'm Cornerstone, I'm always gonna make sure, hey, we're bidding on a year where we're doing cultivation. we're doing cultivation, lowers our number by, you know, $25,000.
So at this point, they were the only bidder. They currently do the work. They do a good job. We still need to bid pruning. What would the board like to do with this contract? Do we need any more clarification, or?
I want to make sure that they kill the dandelions in front of Village Hall.
See, every time he says that, I ask them to plant more, but...
So the, the dandelions too, also are a result of our, our different packages that we can select as part of the, the bid packet. If you look in there, there's alternate for two different applications, which are both suggested by the contractor for us to use. Those are just at, obviously, an additional cost to the village. So if we choose to try and treat, treat the dandelions more aggressively and kill them off, Cornerstone's recommendation was to do the third application, first and third. Second would obviously be ideal. All three would be great for the effectiveness of killing the dandelions, but at the same time, they would like to increase and do the, the third. We didn't feel that that was a cost that the village really felt we needed to expend just to kill some dandelions. But again, that's, that was just our thought process.
If dandelions were hard to grow, everybody would want them. Why spend them on dandelions?
Yeah. How's the board feel about the contract?
I'm okay with it.
So you're gonna bid out the pruning as a separate bid? So it's not necessarily Cornerstone is gonna get that bid, is that what you're saying?
Again, yep, we'll, we'll put that out for bid, just like we did this contract, but it'll be specifically called out for pruning in these areas.
You know, and I would look, and I think that makes sense, and I would look in next year or in future years, if we, if this is going well and we extend it, that's fine, at either a longer bid time, if it's, if that's something that, I mean, reach out to Cornerstone and the others and ask if that was really the issue. But, and if it makes sense, if we're gonna save some money and get more competitive bids to chunk stuff up, I know it puts a lot more on you and your staff to monitor different consultants, but just something to think about for the next time we bid this out.
Absolutely.
All right.
Breaking it down into smaller sections, I mean, there's, there can be an issue with that, where if you break it down into smaller sections, now you're dealing with three or four contractors running throughout the village. It becomes, can become a management nightmare, but...
Yeah.
I mean, if you did that, it would reveal, just because you break it down into smaller packets.
Sure. But if, yeah, if we're saving five grand and now a staff member has to chase them around all summer.
Right. If Cornerstone comes in and bids all of them as a larger company, and, I mean, there's, you're still gonna see their price.
Okay. So Doug is in favor, do you want to make a motion?
I would motion to approve the contract for Cornerstone Landscaping Maintenance Services. Doug?
Any further discussion?
Trustee Marisak?
Yes, ma'am.
Trustee Guyer?
Yes.
Trustee Lee?
Yep.
Trustee Betzinger?
Yes.
And Trustee Youngerman?
No.
That carries 4-1. Thank you all. Item F today is 2019, 2020, snow and ice control plan.
Just, just a second, if we can, on this, I'm doing math here, and just so I understand this Cornerstone thing, our third-year con, or, or 2019 contract is 178, 224, 75. Second-year contract, the one and a half percent is the base contract plus mulch to get to 204? Okay, all right. Because one and a half percent of 178 is not 204, but okay. Now that I understand where it is. Okay, thank you.
All right, snow and ice.
I'm gonna step up here, so it's a little easier for me to see the screen, so. My procrastination to get this to the board didn't work effectively like I was hoping. I was hoping if I didn't bring it to the board, it wouldn't snow, but I was proven wrong, so. But first, I wanted to point out the fact that our staff was called out, obviously, with this last storm. I think they did a great job with the amount of new staff that we had moving forward, so. But I did want to just point out, most of, everything that you're gonna see in this snow plan is very consistent with the last two years in our snow plan. Again, it, it's been very effective, I feel. I've been a part of this snow plan for, and different snow plans before that, for that matter, and I feel that, that the way that we've gone about things in our operations has proven to be very effective, so I kind of wanted to start with that. Our mission, again, hasn't changed much. Provide safe and accessible passage on village streets for emergency, non-emergency uses, residential business and school traffic, provide safe and accessible pedestrian access to public buildings throughout the winter season, minimize time periods when the roadway has reduced or no, no accessibility because of snow and ice events. And then arterial and secondary streets should be returned to their pre-storm condition within eight hours of storms end. Cul-de-sacs and dead ends will be opened and made passable through the storm. However, final cleanup will be secondary to heavier traveled roads. When conditions to, conditions allow the final cleanup of cul-de-sacs may fall on the following business day. So just kind of an idea of how we attack things. I wanted to start with the weather forecasting kind of as our first and foremost. Number one, it's one of our greatest tools that we have, and it's also one of our greatest weaknesses. As many of you know, weather forecasting, it can be very inconsistent. One of the things that it does allow us to do is it allows our staff to be prepared. For example, many of you probably knew that the storm was predicted and coming this weekend, on Monday, actually, rather, sorry, Sunday night into Monday, which allowed us to bring staff in Saturday and prepare for the storm. So that's a big part of it, is just us having that little bit of pre-notice before the event. Vehicle inspections is another one to make sure that our equipment's in proper working condition. So when we know about these events beforehand, it provides us with that tool. Some cases, what the village has done, and something we've been doing for about the last year and a half, two years, is in some cases, when the, the percentages are more probable, we'll actually preload trucks before the event. So that way, it reduces the amount of time that we're spending loading trucks when we're called in. Typically, what we try to do is target when we're gonna get overnight snows, where we're getting guys out of bed to get them to come in. It makes it very hard for us to predict and set time schedules. So if we, for, for example, if we bring guys in at, say, we tell them, we're gonna be in at 2:00 AM, and we come in at 2:00 AM, and they sit for two hours and, and do nothing while it hasn't snowed. So that's something that, that some communities have done. It, it's just very difficult to do because of the way that storms come in. Long-duration event planning, this is probably where the weather forecasting probably serves us the best. It's where we're able to split our crews up, so that way, we're able to provide proper rest for our guys, but also still be able to provide all the functions of our daily activities that we need to, to do for the residents. And then that kind of correlates with our staffing sizes for, for the events.
Mark, how many guys do you have out plowing, or can plow, that have CDLs now out of your staff?
So I'll get to that in a second, if you want to bear with me. We'll talk about the, our staffing levels, so I'll get to that. Vehicles and equipment, want to give a big thank you to you guys as a board and also administration for giving us the proper tools to do our job. The village does a great job of providing us with the funds to purchase and acquire the equipment that we need and have the latest technology, so that is a huge part of that. On the right there, you'll see all the different equipment that we have at our disposal to use, which every one of them plays a significant role. Anti-icing and de-icing, so anti-icing is something that we've kind of ramped up over the last few years as well, something that we're trying to gain more interest in and start utilizing more. This is event that, or this is something that, the anti-icing is something we do pre-event. There's different effectiveness of this. Number one, it's reducing the chlorides, which have a big role on our environment and are also our infrastructure, and can even also be to our vehicles and fleet that we use to fight the snow. It also has a financial impact. We can make salt brine significantly less than what we purchase our granular rock salt, so it can be very effective in that regard to combat certain storms where we would go out and typically treat that with a full call-out or a partial call-out with six or more guys, and we're out spreading granular salt, when we can spend about eight and a half to nine hours to do our anti-icing efforts and possibly not have a call-out at all, depending on the storm. The other thing that it can lead into is it can lean into giving us an extra amount of time before we have to have a response from public works. So sometimes, we may be getting a heavier event, but that anti-icing helps delay those efforts and give our guys a little bit more time to rest and keep the roads still accessible before the, the heavier snow begins to accumulate. And de-icing, de-icing is something that we don't typically use a lot, but it can be utilized. Again, using kind of the same technology, it's basically just a different mixture of different chemicals, applied a little bit differently. And de-icing is typically something that's done after an event where we get a snow pack or an ice cover, and we have to go through and kind of cut that material from the roadway. So those are two, two things that we utilize. Salt, so we've been working really hard over the last about a year and a half to work to reduce our salt amount that we use per year. Calibration of our salt trucks is a big part of this. Knowing that each truck, the little background, each truck does not put out the same amount of salt. It varies per truck. It varies year to year, too. There's different things that come into play. So we have some newer technology, and it's very sophisticated and works really well. But the reality is, is that all has to be calibrated, so you're actually putting down what, what the, the salt controller is telling you it's putting down. So that's a huge part of that, and something that we work hard to get done every year. The other thing I want to point out is there's no standard to our salt rates. We look at every storm completely differently. There are different factors. For example, this storm that we had recently came in and temperatures were right at that, at freezing. In fact, the event started as rain. So it changes our rates and what we want to put down. A lot of communities have kind of more of a set rate, and they, and they'll put down a set rate, and it's great to have a good basis, but I think everybody fluxes their, their salting rates a little bit here and there to accommodate for the certain storm. So that's something to point out. We also have about 800 to 1,000 tons on stone, or, sorry, 800 to 1,000 tons of salt on hand from last year. It's obviously a little bit less now that we had an event, but that is a great asset for us to have. This year, we went out for 1,800 tons is what we went out for in our CMS pricing. There was a huge drastic increase in the cost of salt per ton this year. So the fact that we have a good amount on hand, and we've done a great job of reducing our salt consumption over the past couple of years is just another great, a great indication of why it's important to be conscious of how much we're putting down, too, also from a financial standpoint.
You know, before you switch that picture, that picture is, is roughly 800 tons to 1,000 tons of salt?
Uh, I, I don't know, I remember when I...
Something like that?
I don't remember when I took it.
Think about that, all of that will end up in the Fox River.
Yep.
Isn't that insane?
Wobonzi Creek and other streams.
Right, and it all ends up in there, from every community up and down the Fox River Valley, so.
And even when salt goes into solution, it never goes away. That's another fact about salt. You can water it down as much as you want, but it, it's never truly gone. So no matter when it goes from the roadway to the Catch Basin, to the, to the Fox River, to the Wobonzi Creek, it, it's, it's, it's still here. So for us to do our part, I think, for the environment, and again, reducing the amount of chlorides we're putting on, on the roadways, also impacts the roadway themselves, pavement, infrastructure, storm grates, all of those things. So it, it's, it's a, it's a much larger picture.
Do we still have a shared service agreement with Oswego?
We do. So we do have a, a shared services agreement with Oswego, which we still do utilize, which consists of them, they have a very highly sophisticated brine-making system and the ability to hold a lot more gallons of material than what we currently have. So we do that, and then the exchange is that we apply that material to sections of their roadway in town. And it's been really great. It's a great use of, of shared services and something I hope that we can continue. Talk a little bit about challenges, something we talk about every year. Staffing is obviously one. You know, the demand for clear roadways is, seems to be higher and higher every year. So managing the amount of staff that we need to do day-to-day operations, and then also throwing snow plowing in the mix is something to consider. One thing that we do have this year is there's, we do have a significant amount of newer employees with Public Works Department, so that'll be a, a big part of us training this year and getting our guys up to speed. But again, even after this first event, I was very pleasantly surprised by our, our team's efforts, and, and they did a great job moving, moving through that, through that event, so worked out well. Facility size, this is something that obviously is no surprise to most of the trustees. The Public Works operates with a limited amount of covered or indoor storage. There's a lot of hidden gems to that. Number one is our, some of our equipment has to be stored outside, so again, when we get called in and we have to start vehicles, get them warmed up, get them all cleaned off, because we're not able to house everything inside, where we're able to just take off and address the, the issues that need to be attacked. But also post-event, one of the things that we're very, try to do really well is, is clean our equipment, make sure that it's in good working condition. Salt is very corrosive and it attacks all of our equipment, so keeping it clean, but also that's where the facility comes into play, because we only have so much room to keep trucks inside and get them inside and get them washed. So it's, it's quite a process and a big challenge that we face. Emergency water main repairs is another one. So we talk about putting everybody out on the road and doing snow plowing, but then we've also got that challenge, and unfortunately, the winter months is when that is the biggest call for that. And we'll knock on wood and hope that we don't have too many of those this year. With that also comes water production issues, so we, we always have to take this into consideration, and something that I talk about a lot with our staff is, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning, we have to keep that pretty well regimented, where we keep our testing for our water treatment facilities on a, on a 24-hour basis. So we lose a driver, in most cases, when we're out plowing snow for a good portion of the day, to be able to go out and address those issues. And that's, again, just one, one driver, if everything's going well and there's no need for other activities. So again, that can put a big strain on our snow operations. Traffic is another big one, and something that was prevalent in this storm, so we got into the morning rush hour. With us being very long, almost seven miles on our east to west, it makes it very challenging with the Route 30, basically as our mainstream to get back to our Public Works facility from the out-west part of town, can make it very challenging at certain times of the day to get to where we need to go. So that's a big challenge that we also face each event.
I, I didn't see on the list cars parked in the street.
Uh, that's another great challenge. I could have put that one on there. Something that we definitely saw this go around, and, and we face constantly, almost in every event, so well, well, well put. So Public Works, just as quick as our routes, we're responsible for roughly 162 miles, lane miles of roadway. And then we also, one of the things that most people take for granted is the amount of facilities that we also have to keep clean. There's 14 different facilities. When you factor in all of our pumping stations, wellhouses, Public Works, Village Hall, Police Department, so there's, there's a lot more than what meets the eye. Everybody kind of looks at Village Hall, and the Police Department has their two, but we still have to plow our own lot at Public Works, but then we've got all those smaller satellite locations for the wells and pump houses that come into play. So again, there, there's a lot more behind the, behind the scenes. This is just kind of a general outline of our snow route, our snow map, to give a breakdown of the routes. And you can see that the routes are, the routes are divvied up, and size-wise, they can look a little unorthodox, because some are substantially larger than others because they're spread out a bit more, but they're actually been proven to be spaced out or, or measured out very good. Our drivers typically get done with their routes about the same amount of time, which is what we typically strive for. So that just gives you a good idea of how long we are east to west, and kind of shorter north to south, in the different areas that we attack.
If you had to push one route and only do it one time, on average, how long's it take?
Oh, that's a great question. That would also depend on the call-out. So we do different call-out systems, as indicated in the snow plan. We do what we call a split shift, which is basically where we'll bring in six guys, and that gives us one driver... and that gives us one driver per route. We have six routes, not including our buildings and facilities. So we ask that the driver who has the building or facility in their route has to address that as well. So that can be a big factor. But if we do a full call-out, one entire route, we're probably done and gone, complete. Again, depending on the snow volume, I would say six to eight hours.
Okay, that's not bad.
So it, that's again, depending on the conditions. This is just a quick little maps of our facilities that we have. And again, I'm just showing you the two major facilities I like to call out, which is our Village Hall, which is open to the public obviously during normal work hours. But also the bigger one to call out is our Police Department, which is open 24 hours a day for people to come and go from, obviously a lot more critical for us to keep open. We do keep that at a minimum most of the time in the overnight hours, so we basically primary focus on the front lobby area, keeping that open and then also keeping the officer's ability to get in and out of the, the station to get what they need. So a little bit, little bit like the roadways where we have a kind of a secondary plan to come out and we clean the majority of that then during normal business hours when we have the appropriate staff to do so or after the storm's complete. So this, we're kind of more geared towards what Denny's question was. So the snow routes gives you an idea of what we're looking when we put out a full call-out. So you look here, we have one Director of Public Works, an Administrative Assistant who's obviously not out in a, in a snow vehicle, two Superintendents, two Water Operators, a Fleet Mechanic, one Building Maintenance Technician, one Arborist, and then there's straight, eight members of our Street Maintenance Crew that plow snow. So that gives you kind of a breakdown of, of all the guys that we're putting out.
They all got CDLs?
We currently have two employees that are getting their CDLs. They were hired recently in the last month, they were hired last month.
The rest of them all have the CDL.
Correct.
So if they don't have the CDL, they can drive the pickup trucks, right?
Correct, so they were utilized in this last event for that exact, exactly what we did. We put those guys in the pickup trucks. Both of those guys do have, staff members do have their permit and we're definitely pushing hard for them to get those, so. So yeah, we do still have the ability to combat snow without the CDL, but it does play a huge factor in that, so. So that is like, again, there's, there's a ton I could talk about snow, a lot. There's tons of different scenarios and different things that we go through and tons of points I'm sure I haven't hit.
Go back two slides, two or three slides to the, the map.
Facilities or the major map?
Not one.
Okay.
Okay. Orange zone is...
The best zone?
Absolutely. That's Zone Four, okay.
So the one question I would have is other than making a joke about the zone is, and I, I know Todd used to do this and I suspect you're probably doing the same, is to track overtime per event or man-hours per event, it would be really nice to be able to convey to residents that our staff came in at two or three o'clock in the morning and we, you know, we do our best to, I know you do your best to, you know, flex their workdays, so maybe we're not paying over, as much overtime. But there is a cost associated with that and it'd be really great for us to be able to convey that to residents to say, to get these streets to look in this condition, when you want to leave for work at 7:00 AM, it costs us money in man-hours and, and equipment. And kind of segues into my other comment is, I'm on the Northwest Water Planning Alliance with the Mayor of Elgin and a couple of years ago, and he was talking about a program that they instituted where they, they stopped plowing if it was two inches or less on a weekend or overnight. Basically they were not paying for overtime and there was significant, I don't want to say significant, but it, a decent amount of savings that they were able to turn around to the residents and say, listen, if it's an inch or two, drive slowly on your side, on your side streets until Monday morning. And I don't know the ins and outs of that program and I'm not proposing that we do that, but just something to think about as we try and use less salt, we try and, you know, freeze our levy every year, that there are some things that we can do, I'm just not sure that our residents are really ready for that.
I, I would agree with that 100%. And again, I don't know the ins and outs of that program as well, but I have heard of them doing that up there. There's a lot of factors that I think that go into that, again, where snow is very unique and the fact that no two events are ever the same. That's the one, one consistency of snow is that they're never the same. Wind speeds, temperatures, air temperature, both air and ground temperatures are a huge factor, pre-storm, post-storm. There's just a lot of things to consider. So yeah, I'd love to see some more ins and outs of, of how they attack that and, and utilize that program. But I think you hit the nail on the head. We, we do spend a lot of time after hours, again, just as a, as an indication too, just preparing for snow. You know, we have daily operations that we have to do. A lot of these trucks are multifaceted, so they're used for different applications during the day and then have to be set up for when we do have snow events. So there is a lot of times an overtime cost just in that in itself, so.
Do we still use some of these trucks for our leaf?
Yes.
So we're swapping those out?
Correct.
Yeah.
I know during, I apologize Steve, during the last electronics recycling event, I went into their barn and Pat was in there grinding the back of one of the plows to get all the rust off of it and then he was painting it with, God knows what that stuff was, it looked like tar, in a preparation to try to eliminate the attack from the salt this year. So that preparation that residents don't see, that was what, four weeks ago?
Yep.
He was already preparing.
So that, that was a great point and something that I should mention is, you know, Pat Willis is our Fleet Mechanic, so Pat handles all of the snow and ice equipment, but on top of that he also handles about 20-plus vehicles for our Police Department. So he is one staff member that handles a lot of different things. Pat starts our snow preparation really way before what you're indicating, which is a tribute to why we were prepared 100% for the storm. We had every truck available to attack the storm. And actually even the two small events that we had, which we didn't, we didn't really do much, we didn't have to respond to those because it, it didn't last very long. But even at that point, we were 100% ready to go with every vehicle and piece of equipment that we have. So Pat deserves a lot of credit for being very proactive on getting our equipment up to par before the winter season.
Please pass our appreciation along.
Definitely.
That's the worst job to have in the winter is a mechanic, because we have one mechanic and if something breaks, he fixes it and he may have to come in and fix it.
And he's also responsible for a route.
And he also has the squad cars, so that's, you know, being one guy, he does a great job for the village and keeping everything going. I, I don't know how he does it, I really don't.
A few years ago, okay, a few years, nine, 10 years ago, the Super Bowl Storm, we got 19 inches of snow. I think the Village Board was, was made aware of the issues that we have with the police vehicles and not necessarily being four-wheel drive and, or all-wheel drive. If we ever run into a situation like that, does Public Works and the Police Department, do they have a response plan where if we've got to get emergency services to someone, there's a plow truck with that? And we know what we're doing here?
Yes, so we have that indicated in our snow plan as well where there may be indication, or there may be points in time where that's exactly how we have to approach it. That's something that I don't believe we implemented in that storm. I was here, that was about five years ago. But I do know that before my time here with the village, I was a private contractor and that's something that we did, that the City of Aurora has implemented. So it's definitely something that we want to use as a last resort, but it is something that we have talked about. In fact, it got brought up when we did our inter-staff meeting for snow last week was that we do have that possibility where we may have to stage trucks and equipment and basically just be a frontrunner for either police or fire.
If it gets to that point, I'm assuming that the emergency management agencies are telling people to stay off the roads and at, at some point if you're out on the road, you can be ticketed anyway. So hopefully we never get to that situation.
Let's hope not.
And then the other thing was just an observation. When I was headed out of my development on, across from a police station, I was headed north on, or excuse me, east on 30, I saw the couple of the plow trucks come out of the PD and I know why they lift their blades on 30, it's not our route, but the state's terrible. Is it worth just having them put their blade down while they're coming down there because of all the issues and stuff that we've had on 30? It's a dangerous intersection at Orchard and 30 anyway. Should we just run our blades down the street? Or does that open us up to liability?
I think, I mean, that's where I would ask Attorney Gillian to comment, but I, I would imagine that there's liability, but there's also a lot of time involved in that because at some point they're going to turn off and go into their, their next area that they're going to have.
No, I'm, I'm not saying plow 30 at all, but I'm saying if you've got to go down 30, you might as well just have your blade down.
Again, I would, I would have to defer.
Yeah, and I can look into it further, but there could potentially be the liability issues if you're undertaking to do somebody else's area.
And you're not throwing salt.
Well, and then you run the risk of having partially plowed route. So pedestrian traffic on 30 gets quarter mile of plowed pavement and then all of a sudden, if the truck is turned in.
No, I get what you guys are saying, but the state...
Well, but if you're driving down Route 30 and, and the plow truck has gone in front of you and it's now clear and he turns into Foxmore Fairfield and you hit eight inches of snow on the roadway and you're not ready for it, you're going 30 miles an hour and now you hit.
You got a little bit of plowed pavement, consider yourself lucky. That, that should be the state's stance.
So kind of along those lines, two questions. One, this doesn't have the commerce stuff on it, do we plow that by Sugar Dome?
Ah, yes, we do.
So that's part of the green route?
That has been accepted by the village and yes, it is.
And then the, so the, and the only development then is the Harts Development that we currently don't plow?
Correct.
Because we haven't, we haven't taken those roads owner.
Correct.
So they're, there are residents there, they're responsible for plowing that?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
I believe the responsibility falls on the developer, but...
Yeah.
Oh, the residents are paying for it, trust me.
Okay. Any other questions or do you have any other comments?
No, I would just say that, you know, 21 years ago when I started with the village, the amount of equipment we had, the type of equipment we had, and back then the, the game plan was, and this was actually a, a term used throughout all the municipalities, is go out there and burn the snow off the pavement. And that was just throwing a lot of salt. I, I think the village has come a long way. One of the things that I was happy to see Public Works go to was two men in a route where they would simultaneously take a cut and a curb cut at the same time. That in my opinion really helped the residents because we would receive a lot of complaints that you would go take a pass each way, come back four hours later, everybody would clean out their driveways and you plow the snow right back in. And the big thing that I felt is you were with somebody. So when you're out in the middle of the night and you're by yourself and plowing, you do get more fatigued and you, you, you're just out there by yourself. But when you have a plow buddy and you're together, I, I think it just keeps you more, more alert and it gives you somebody to communicate with, you know you're out there with somebody else. I think that was one of the, one of the, one of the best things to the snow plow plan that's been changed in recent years. I, I don't know what your feeling is on that Mark, but I, I, I thought that worked out excellent.
Yeah, and then I think Trusty Guyer said a great point, that's something that was implemented by a previous director and again, something that I didn't feel I wanted to change because I feel it's very effective. It again was proven to be the case for us on Monday. We were able to have our staff pretty well wrapped up and back home by roughly about two o'clock. The village was actually off on Monday in recognition of Veterans Day, so it was good to get our guys off the road and, and back home. So it eliminates our amount of staff time, gives us some flexibility. There's just a lot of good things that, that come of it. Again, I think Dan highlights a great point of the fact that when we come down the road, we make one pass. Many times it can be six, eight, 10 hours later when we are in that split shift and we have one person running a route because it takes that amount of time to get through the route. And also note that there's, you know, a, a break in there for the drivers, you know, they need to eat lunch too and take a rest at some point. So they're entitled to their, their standard half hour break that they get for their lunch or dinner. So it can take a long time, so that's where that tandem truck operation comes into a big factor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to all of your guys too.
I will definitely pass it along.
Everybody needs a plow buddy. All right, moving on, we have one item for discussion this evening, liquor license request from Maze Lounge. Welcome. Does staff have an introduction or just turn it over?
No, just turn it over.
Thank you for waiting, appreciate it.
She's requesting a liquor license.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
So I work with Maze Lounge and we are trying to obtain a liquor license, a Class F liquor license with the Village of Montgomery. So basically our business concept is a small little cafe. We do serve food items, top of style dishes, and we're trying to take a space. It's a 1240 Route 34 on Oswego Road. So our space square footage would be about roughly 1,500 to 2,000 square foot. Right now we're looking at the space, it's not built yet actually. It's going to be next to McAllister's Deli, so that's the space we're releasing. We're trying to obtain a lease, but we really need permission from you guys to move forward. So basically Maze Lounge is a small cafe and then we're really trying to get gaming in as well. I'm not going to lie, that's one of our business models too. But we do serve liquor, not liquor, but like beer and wine, and then we do serve food options as well for our guests. Is there any questions you guys have? I mean, I probably know you guys have questions, but if you want to scroll down, you can see our menu. So that's a basic floor plan of, that's a concept drawing of what Maze would look like. So basically we kind of provide an upscale brand luxury experience for all of our guests. We have a lot of other locations. We seem to be doing pretty well at all of our locations. The closest one to here from Montgomery would be Glendale Heights, Bartlett or Streamwood. Those are the closest to here. I'm not sure if you guys have ever ventured into one, but I, and then you did see the concept book that I brought too. So that's a little bit about what we look like. And then if you want to scroll down a little bit, that's our, that's one of our menus that we offer too. We kind of change it up based on the season as well and then the, the food options as well, so.
And these are all Maze Lounge, they're branded as Maze Lounge or they're different names?
No, they're Maze, they're all Maze, yeah.
As, as part of a liquor license, in order to get, because this would be considered like a restaurant-type liquor license.
They're asking for a Class F license, which is beer and wine to be consumed on premises. It does not have any, any food component, no. G is the restaurant license and they're asking for a Class F license.
So we don't have the 50/50?
Nope.
That, that's where I was going with that.
Yeah, no, it's just a beer and wine to be consumed on premises is what a Class F is.
To meet the ability to get the gaming.
Correct.
And just for clarification purposes, you don't plan on doing any cannabis-infused beer?
No, that is not our business concept, so we...
Conversation sway you at all?
Not really, no. So I wanted to also add that we put in about 250,000 into the build-out. We remodeled and pretty much got the entire lease space. Our lease term is about five years, five to 10 years depending on the contract. Normally he signs a five-year lease and then he kind of bases it off the area as well, so I did want to say that. And then we hire, potentially hire four to six part-time employees as well once completely remodeled and the business is up and running.
I noticed in your drawing you have about five gambling machines, so really, and tax-wise, I don't think you're going to get to the 20,000 as far as what we get. Actually, we've had these come in before from, from us, in front of us and they're more of like little casinos basically.
The 20,000 I specified, that's in about food and beverage sales, that's what I would specify. And you're, are you talking about gaming revenue?
No, we don't, I don't know if we would, I don't know what the rule on that is, but we don't have... I don't know what the rule on that is, but we don't have...
We get, well, we do, but...
We get a percentage of the gaming sales, of the gaming revenue.
Or isn't it just for the machines? Isn't it a flat?
No, we get a percentage of the, of the fee that state collects.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's in the... Yeah, twenty thousand annually from food and beverage sales.
Right, that's sales, that's not money to, to the village.
Yeah, that's not, that's just their annual sales.
That's just what they would generate in food and beverage sales.
So that's why I specified that, because the Class G license, it needed to be fifty percent or more. So that's why I'm, we're applying for a Class F, because I know we wouldn't make that standard that you guys were requesting.
Are these photos, these facilities in Streamwood, Bartlett?
Yes, they're all the same. Yeah, those are, that's exactly what our Maze Lounges look like.
Okay, that, these are photos from those?
Yes.
Because it just, I mean, at fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet, these facilities look an awful lot larger than that.
I don't know who the photographer was, but it's, some of our spaces, it depends on the lease space. So our biggest space is probably twenty-five hundred. I, we don't really have any more other spaces bigger than that.
And does this indicate the hours? What would, when would you be?
Yes, so I did specify, if you want to, can you scroll up for me? Those are, I know the hours of operation according to the liquor license. They, we, some, like, if we are allowed to open, we probably would not open at eight AM, but we like to specify that in case of things that come up, too. And then normally, our hours of operation would be ten AM to midnight, or, and then on Sundays, eleven AM to midnight. So that's normally, on a normal hour basis. And then with holidays, we do, like, we're only closed Christmas, technically. And then we do have alternative hours, too, for our workers as well.
Do those hours fit into with our, the limitations of our G license?
Yes, those specified hours.
That's the G license hour, or that's our liquor hours? So I just pulled up the state data, just for, I guess, information for the group. The Bartlett facility that you guys have, Maze Bartlett LLC, looks like it generated over twelve months about seven thousand dollars for the municipality. Was the tax that was generated, just information. It's kind of insane to look at the wager amounts. There's one point four million dollars that were wagered at that facility. It just seems insane.
It's pretty crazy.
What cities were they in, again? Bartlett, Streamwood?
That, those are the closest to Montgomery, Glendale Heights, Bartlett, and Streamwood. But we have Maze locations all over. We have Berwyn, Hickory Hills, Niles, Wheeling.
Type in Maze Lounge, is that like a bunch of locations that pop up?
And those are all owned by the same group?
It's, yeah, Overland Management.
Okay.
We have twelve locations currently open.
In Illinois?
In Illinois, only in Illinois.
Okay. So historically, and pardon me if somebody had already said this, historically, we've been approached by several this similar uses. Generally, they all requested, or we push them more towards a G license, because that's kind of the vision that we had and that residents have had for the community to have a restaurant that also has gaming. So as you're probably well aware, we don't have a facility like this in town, and that's by design, I think. The restaurant license, we've updated years ago, so that fifty percent of your revenue has to come from...
Food.
Only, yeah.
From food, right.
Right, and everything else is...
And then, everything else, it doesn't specify gaming, but essentially, that's where that bucket is there. So it's, it would be a hard threshold, which is why you're not applying for that. So I mean, it's ultimately up to the board. This is a brand-new building that's going on our, the busiest stretch of highway in town, you know, the combined thirty-thirty-four section.
But I think this is something, though, that when, when Drew came in, we were looking at the, a different concept, and we were looking at potentially not necessarily going according to the restaurant liquor license, but somehow maybe a percentage of revenue or something like that.
Yeah, yeah, we told him, what, clarify his vision, bring it back, and we'll see if it matches ours. And so, you know, she did a good job of laying out their vision. Is that something that you can see is a good fit in our community? Or is this, or do, I guess the standard questions are, when Chief Myers was here, is do you need more information, or outright interested, or are you not interested?
Well, let me remind everybody that we had two people want the same type of casino, little casinos. One was Petco, which already had a business in town, and he had that empty little room there. He wanted to be a casino. Grandma's Table wanted to put the back end into a casino before it went into a party room, and we turned him down, too. And both of them have been in our, in our community for a long time. So this is new, but at the same time, to me, it's a...
Grandma's Table has gaming in the back room now.
Yeah.
Grandma's Table has gaming in the back room.
I know he's got it, but he didn't have the, the first thing he asked for, if you remember, was a gambling lounge.
That was before my time, then.
Oh, yes. And the Petco one, you remember that one right up there?
What Petco?
Walgreens? Yes, that was what, and that wasn't that long ago.
Oh, the pet, like by Pets Pies Plus?
Yeah, Pets Pies Plus, yes.
I thought it was across the street, over by Blockbuster. A ribbed café or something, yeah. Okay.
I do want to add that I know our concept, not everyone matches it. I think it's a little different, especially with the amount of money that we put in, the even design factor, too. And then I've even gone to the locations, and actually, people just sit down and drink wine and talk to each other, too. They actually, it's like an experience, and it's not just about the gaming aspect, either. So I just did want to point that out as well.
And do you have a kitchen, or is it...
Yes, it's a small kitchen.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with the concept. My issue with the information was mainly the letter from Mr. Elias, talking about meticulous attention is paid to every detail with multiple typos in the letter. Kind of caught my attention. Again, this type of business, that it exists in our community, there, there's several gaming stations in different fashions. I don't have a problem with it.
I don't see the kitchen in this layout. I don't see the kitchen space anywhere on this floor plan.
I would have to give you an updated floor plan, because we do abide by all health code standards, too. And then we will work with the health inspector in the health department. So I'm not...
Well, I get that, but when you talk about having a kitchen, and you're serving this tapas food that you could put into a toaster oven, there's a difference between having a kitchen and having a toaster oven in a corner. So that's the concern, is, you know, I just don't see a kitchen space. So, and it's concerning to me, and I think the square footage on some of these facilities in these photos are much larger than twenty-five hundred square feet. I just don't, I can't envision all of what you have in this drawing fitting in fifteen hundred to two thousand square feet. But, you know, it's a concept drawing. And I'm not in support. I don't, I don't, I've never been in support of the gaming facilities, the mini-casinos. I don't, I don't think that they're conducive to what we have for our economic development plan out there on Route Thirty-four.
I mean, I hear you. That's, that's, that was my thought, and I guess I shouldn't comment on other types of commercial users that could move into that facility, you know, like a mattress store or something, which we don't really need another one of those. What's, what do you guys think?
I'm a no, just like I was before and all the rest of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm pretty much a no also, but I do need two minutes. I'll be right back.
Okay, we'll keep talking. Steve? Or do you need more information, or do you want to go visit a site?
I was, I was planning on doing that just out of curiosity.
I was, too.
I'm open to the concept. I would say at this point, more information.
Okay.
But if everyone else is a no, it's kind of a mute point for...
I'm curious, you know, a month ago, that young man came with somewhat of a similar concept to this. And as a board, we were seemingly interested and open to hearing that conversation and asking for some more information. And what we have in front of us tonight is is a much more thorough and thought-out plan and a model that exists in other communities.
Well, he was a barber shop during the day. He was a barber shop during the day and a co-op in the back. This is a gaming facility from open to close.
It's a lounge.
Yeah, it's...
Don't have any of those in town. There's no lounges in town.
We don't have anything of anything in town.
No.
Right, and we won't until we start having some. So I just, I don't see it as a, as a detriment to the community. I don't see it as something we would say, oh, God, not in this town. We don't want that in this town.
We don't have girls dancing on poles either, but it's just something that we've stayed away from, and this we've stayed away from. I'm sure the people are going to come back to us.
This is...
Judy's writing that down.
This looks like something that my wife and I and our friends would go to. And sit down, have a couple drinks, and, you know, play some games and stuff, and...
You know?
I'm kind of with, I'm with Trusty Youngerman on more information. I'll divert to more information, and I'm going to plan to go and visit several of these.
Yeah, in the meantime, I'm, my in-laws live in Bartlett. I can go up there. I mean, I'm up there all the time. I can stop in there.
I'll go there, and you can buy me a drink.
You never know, your wife probably has stopped by there before.
She might have, I mean...
So the one question that I would have, and the one thing that I will say seriously, is that we've tried and maybe been successful in avoiding these type of facilities, but we've, what we've ended up with is facilities that come into the community, you know, dressed as a restaurant, that end up opening up with the gaming in the middle of the restaurant, and it's essentially a gaming hall. You know, the one facility I'm talking about didn't last, but that's a facility that I'm not going to with my kids. Even though they masked it as a restaurant so that it could be family-friendly, it's not. And this is clear upfront, not a place to go with your kids. Do you allow people that are under twenty-one in the facility?
Twenty-one and older.
So there's something to be said for that. You're not, you are, you know, a spade is a spade. This is what this is. We allow gaming in the community. So I think at this point, if you, if you have any additional information that, you know, that you think would be helpful, and if you're willing to come back at the next meeting in two weeks, and then if you can get an updated floor plan, just so we kind of understand what the facility might look like.
That's fine. That's going to be my question. When you were saying more information, what specific information is that you're looking for that you don't have now, so that we know what either staff or...
Kitchen details, basically.
Kitchen details, I think it gives us time to do a little bit of reconnaissance and then looking into, you know, going to some of these locations and stuff.
And the other thing I would, I would throw, I don't mean to cut you off, is revenue that you would generate for the community. You know, the, I pulled up Bartlett. I assume there's probably some metric, and you can see what you'd hope to do here. And that's good information to have for us. All right, anything else? Any other questions? And then that way Teresa can weigh in on this, too, at the future meeting, so. And then, can you state your name, just so we have it?
Amanda Bailey.
Could you sign in for me with your contact info? Thank you.
She's actually on the agenda, though.
With her contact info?
Does she need to sign in?
I mean, we don't have any information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Did Mark sign in? Did you sign in? Do that before you leave.
All right, with that, I'll move on to newer unfinished. Danny, any sports updates?
I'm wearing my shirt, Dan.
I noticed.
You know who's in first place, that's all I can say.
All right, anything else from anybody pertinent? Okay, future meetings. So our next committee, the whole meeting, is canceled. Village Board meeting in two weeks, actually, less than two weeks, on Monday, the twenty-fifth, at seven PM. Do we really have intergovernmental before that meeting?
I do not know. It's, that's when it's usually scheduled, is before the second meeting of the month, but then we threw this one in.
So that may be canceled, so stay tuned.
That's, I would leave that to Danny and Debbie if it feels needed. I do not know.
We do not have executive session. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Trusty Youngerman?
Yes.
Trusty Marisack?
Yes.
Trusty Guyer?
Yes.
Trusty Lee?
Yes.
And Trusty Betsinger?
Yes, ma'am.
And we're adjourned. Thank you.